Good evening, everyone. Thank you for your attendance at tonight's November 9th, 2015 School Board meeting. Please stand and join me in the plaid of the agenda.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All members are in attendance this evening. Would someone like to move approval of the agenda, please?
Moved.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. We'll begin with the canvas of the School Board election results. Would someone like to make that resolution?
Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Whereas the School Board of Independent School District 271 has canvassed the November 3rd, 2015 election returns, therefore be it resolved that the School Board hereby declares the following candidates elected to four-year terms beginning January 4th, 2016: Maureen Baralata, Dick Bergstrom, and Nellie Corman. And the clerk of said board is instructed to so notify the candidates according to law. Do we need the voter recap?
I don't think so.
Don't need it.
Okay.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. I just want to note that this election we had 15 percent voter turnout, which is very low for Bloomington, but just by the way. All right. Is there any discussion of this? Hearing none. All in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Thank you. Oh, thank you. Appreciate that.
Fans in the audience.
Next, we'll move to recognition of student, staff, and public. There's an American Education Week proclamation. Would someone like to make that motion?
Madam Chair, be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approve the attached proclamation proclaiming November 16th through 20th, 2015, as American Education Week in the Bloomington Public Schools.
Second. Thank you. Second. I'll read the proclamation quickly here. Whereas throughout American history, schools have helped democratize our nation, strengthen our communities, and widen opportunities for all people; and whereas by integrating different groups through commonly shared values, schools prepared this nation's diverse population to live harmoniously in a democratic society; and whereas for generations, our schools have answered the call to develop and challenge the future leaders of our families, our communities, and our nation; and whereas there is no greater legacy than the sound education of our children and therefore continuing education of our adults. Now therefore, we, members of the Bloomington Board of Education, proclaim in the Bloomington Public Schools that November 16th through the 20th, 2015, be observed as the 94th anniversary of American Education Week. All in favor, would you like to speak to it first, Assistant Superintendent Melby?
Certainly. Chair Baralata, Superintendent Fujitaki, members of the board, public viewing public, I just want to point out that American Education Week is intended to recognize and celebrate the great work that's happening in our schools. In Bloomington, we have award-winning schools and staff in those schools who consistently earn state and national recognition for their efforts in educational excellence. Here in Bloomington, we have innovative teachers and programs that help ensure that all of our students will thrive in a rapidly changing world. We not only innovate at the K-12 level, but we have programs and staff who are recognized leaders in the world of early childhood education and adult education, not to mention our special education and gifted and talented programs and staff are some of the best in the state. Finally, our great staff are proud of our district's diversity, fully embrace our technology, and are grateful for our strong community and parental support, which allows us to ensure that every student gets a high-quality education here at Bloomington Public Schools. So on behalf of all the staff and workers at the Bloomington Public Schools, I want to thank the board for recognizing American Education Week.
Thank you. I have a certificate for you, but let's vote first. All in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Thank you. That brings us to the Chemical Health Week proclamation. Would someone like to make that motion?
Madam Chair.
Please.
Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 proclaims the week of November 16th to November 20th, 2015, as Chemical Health Week in Bloomington Public Schools.
Okay.
Thank you. I'll read the resolution. Whereas alcohol and other drug abuse in the United States severely affects individuals, families, schools, and communities; and whereas the color red has been chosen to represent individual and community commitment efforts to reduce alcohol and other drug abuse in our community; and whereas business, government, law enforcement, schools, religious institutions, service organizations, neighborhoods, youth, senior citizens, and other individuals are encouraged to demonstrate their commitment to help reduce and prevent alcohol and other drug abuse by wearing and/or displaying the color red during Chemical Health Week and wearing and/or displaying a red ribbon. Now therefore be it resolved that the School Board of Bloomington Public Schools does hereby declare November 16th through the 20th, 2015, Chemical Health Week in Bloomington Public Schools, and encourages its staff, students, excuse me, and families to participate in drug prevention education activities, making a visible statement that we are strongly committed to a drug-free community. Be it further resolved that the School Board encourages all students, staff, parents to support alcohol and other drug abuse prevention efforts year-round. And we have our Director of Learning Support, Andy Kova, here to receive the proclamation.
Thank you. Chair Baralata, Superintendent Board Members in public, I want to thank you for recognizing this important week as well. Like any worthy endeavor, it's a week that we recognize, but it's something that goes on every day in our schools where we are helping to educate our students about chemical awareness. And so, we picked this week to wear red, but all through the year, we do different things to make sure that this is on the forefront of what we're thinking about. Different schools do different weeks. You know, the high schools ramp up the appreciation of this type of work near prom, and so it's something that's ongoing. But on behalf of everyone in Bloomington, thank you for recognizing this.
Thank you. If there's no discussion, all in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the board on a subject that is not on the agenda? Seeing no one come forward, I'd like to make a statement about the government classes that students attend our meetings. A requirement of our 12th grade government class is to observe a governmental meeting of some sort. Things that they may attend are city council meetings, school board meetings, courtroom proceedings, or the like. The social studies curriculum guide identifies essential standards, one of which is to understand the role and influence of political processes and organizations by examining the role of interest groups, think tanks, the media, and public opinion on the political process and public policy formation. I'd like to invite the students that are in the audience to come over to the podium, introduce yourself. I know you're from Jefferson. If you would just like to state your teacher's name, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Hi, board. I'm Tara Jeffroy. I go to Jefferson. I'm in the AP Government Class, topped by Ms. Meredith Abby Kirsted.
Thank you.
I think that's all.
All right.
Hi, my name's Eli Olson. I also go to Jefferson, also a senior in AP Gov. as well, and my teacher is Ms. Meredith Abby Kirsted.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming. At the close of the session or after one hour, you can ask for a signature on your agenda from anyone in the administrative cabinet that's along the wall. Thank you for coming. That brings us to Part A of the agenda, which includes our board business, minutes, personnel items, field trips, grants, and our finances and contracts and agreements. Would someone like to move Part A of the agenda?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor of the Part A part of our agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Moving right along into Part B. We have a resolution regarding graduation exercises. Would someone like to make that resolution?
Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 establishes graduation exercises for the 2015-2016 school year on the following dates: Jefferson High School, Wednesday, June 1st, 2016, 7:00 p.m. Kennedy High School, Thursday, June 2nd, 2016, 7:00 p.m. Furthermore, the School Board of Independent School District 271 establishes the location for the 2015-2016 graduation exercises at Mariucci Arena at the University of Minnesota, and approves the facility use agreement with the Regents of the University of Minnesota for the aforementioned date.
Thank you. Thank you. And our Assistant Superintendent is here to discuss this with us?
I am. Doesn't have to probably be a huge discussion, but the decision about dates and place gets made with the high school principals and myself and the previous Assistant Superintendent, Chris Lennox, had some discussions after last graduation, I think. So what Chair Baralata just shared is the recommendation, the dates, and the location. And I can answer questions if anybody has any questions.
Director Bennett?
Well, last year, we had both graduations on the same night, which I enjoyed. I was wondering, was that part of the conversation this year, or was there people that didn't like doing both on one night, or?
Yes, it was part of the conversation, and logistically, it was very tough and tricky to do it all on one night, so we went to two nights this year.
Go ahead. Director Sorm?
And then, is there a cost increase doing it with two nights? I think that was one of the factors last year, that we were able to save some money, and then this gets transposed right back to the students and the families?
Yeah, the cost increase brings it back in line with what it was previous years with two separate evenings. It's not drastically larger than it was, but it is what it was.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing no further discussion. All in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Thank you. Next, we have a resolution regarding the Bloomington Public Schools World's Best Workforce Annual Report. Madam Chair. Thank you.
Be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 accepts the World's Best Workforce Annual Report for the 2014-2015 school year.
Second. Thank you. I believe Director Kaufman of Community Relations is here too.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Fujitaki. My apologies, I was tweeting out the graduation dates for my district Twitter site. So what you have in front of you is a final draft of the World's Best Workforce Annual Report, which is required by the Minnesota Department of Education under the World's Best Workforce legislation. Just highlights specifically, the board has requested that we bring to you a final draft before it does get published, it is not yet published. The annual report, it contains four pages of information that identifies the five basic, the five goals as established by the World's Best Workforce, data that has already been shared with you with respect to Dr. Heistad's work and analysis and results, as well as Assistant Superintendent Eric Melby's work with the PAC, the Pathways Advisory Committee, which I reviewed all of the curriculum cycles and information that's contained herein. So what we're asking tonight is the board to approve this before we greenlight it to go to publication. It will be contained within the next issue of School Pages. So I open that up for any questions, if you have.
Anyone have any questions? Go ahead.
Sorry. You know, I think I brought this up last year when we had the same conversation, is the thing that I don't like about this, and I understand that this is the way we have to report it, but I wish that when we would put it in our publications, that we would break out. So, for instance, if we look at, what page is this? Three? Four? Page four. And we're looking at, it says all students in Hispanic, African-American, free-reduced-lunch, English-language learners. And I know that this is a hot topic now, especially considering there's that lawsuit, I think against, in Minneapolis, about are we educating our minority students? Is, I still, I don't think it's fair that the English-language learners are applied to the other groups, because we, you aren't comparing apples to apples, so to speak. So when 25 percent of our African-American students are English-language learners, and we already know that English-language learners are going to struggle, I think it makes it, it doesn't paint a good picture for what this district is actually doing for our students. And so that's, you know, every time I see these numbers, that always comes to mind. And I don't know that there's anything we can do about that at this point. I just wanted to bring it up as a marketing thing that I think we could have room for improvement.
Chair Baralata and Director Oliva, I entirely agree with you. The formatting of this five-goal simple report is simplistic. Our reporting that will be for the pathways and integration report is much more detailed and does have all the breakouts that you're talking about, where we control for language, ELL services, et cetera. We have, for simplicity, just gone with the state template for this annual report. We could discuss whether a more lengthy report that breaks out apples-to-apples comparisons would be appropriate for this report. But that meeting is already scheduled, and will be coming up shortly, where the board will receive integration data, detailed breakout of gaps, where we do control for English language. Thank you.
Director Sorm?
Is this a standard enough chart? I mean, do all districts have to use the same six categories?
All districts.
To show?
Mm-hmm. Director Sorm, all districts are to follow the template for the five goals, and whether districts are doing more than the template, I'm not sure. I know my daughter is the coordinator of communications in a school district, and their report is even shorter than ours.
Yeah, did want to mention that a friend of mine, who's the chair of a charter school board, did look at ours and say, wow, yours looks really good compared to what ours looks like, so.
And I would share that with another district that I had talked to too, as they had their annual meeting, and it was just mainly a couple of charts, and they talked about what they were going to be doing. And this is so comprehensive and just indicates once more that we are, you know, leading the parade, so to speak, with doing some of these things. But it just seems that there should be, you know, like we have eight categories in our reporting normally to the state, there should be a similar number that everybody has to report on, even though there might be a fraction of, you know, five, six students or whatever that particular number is, threshold that they have to use.
Other questions? Director Bennett?
Yeah, I'm looking at the MCA proficiency gaps, and some of them, our students actually went down in a couple categories, and we saw the same, the goal, we have the 2015-2016 goal. Are those goals going to be updated because of that, or are they still going to be going for the same goal?
Mathematics, we didn't see the same kind of progress that we did with reading, with several of the subgroups. And we have established a goal for all students to make at least two percentage point increase over the baseline, and students of color to make at least three percentage points, and white students at least one percentage point. So we're expecting three times the gain for students of color than for white students. And so these goals were set in reference to the proficiency gaps that you see on that report. The integration reports goes into a little bit more detail, where we break out the English home language students versus Spanish home language, and the Somali home language versus English home language within those categories of African-American and Hispanic students. So there'll be separate goals for them as well.
Okay. When were these goals made? Were they made last year, or?
So we, this is a report of 2014-15 achievement, and then the goals are set for 2016. These are the goals that we'd like to achieve next spring, when the MCA's come out.
Okay. And then go back to what Rick was talking about. So do you have the data that controls, for like, example, like Hispanic students? Do we have the data that would show Hispanic students that aren't English-language, that aren't poverty, that aren't special ed? Is there still a large achievement gap between these different groups and, say, white students?
The report that you receive at the next meeting will show you that the gap is much smaller for English-speaking Hispanic students and English-speaking, well, no, for English-speaking African-American students, there's actually a larger gap.
Oh, really?
But we have to remember that a lot of these students were English-language learners in the past, and even though they've improved greatly, they may not be up to these really high proficiency bars that are set by the MCA. So I haven't done a study of students that were English speakers in kindergarten, and that's something that we could put on the docket.
So you have the same data for the free and reduced lunch as well?
But I've got those data in my office. I didn't bring them with me, but that, there will be a more extensive presentation and discussion, where we'll have those interactions between language and race. And last year, we had an addendum where we broke out the data by those categories as well, so that's what I'll do in the future. Thank you.
So you have for the, also the free and reduced lunch as well, or you're just looking at the language?
Free and reduced lunch versus full-price lunch, and I haven't broken that out within each of the racial ethnic categories, but I could.
Okay.
What's required for the integration report is an emphasis on students of color.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Any other questions?
I do have a quick one here. So as we mentioned in the district profile, we're mentioning the number of schools that we have and the type of schools that they are, and the first one is the early childhood centers. And I know we're talking here about K-12, but were any conversations regarding any of the, mentioning any of the early childhood efforts and where we're heading towards with this, or is that not relevant at all for this report?
The annual report shares the information that a template is provided by MDE for all school districts, and that's what's contained in the annual report.
Oh, with a template, okay.
In the first goal, the first goal is kindergarten readiness, and that's actually an assessment of how well we're doing with early childhood prior to kindergarten.
Oh, okay.
So we do see an increase in the percentage of students hitting that target, which we would, and since the demographics of those students haven't changed, there's still high poverty, high percentage English-language learners, I would attribute that to good instructional efforts.
Oh, okay. Yeah, because I was just wondering, you know, if I was a parent reading the report, you know, if I would just be wondering, you know, what happened with early childhood and what are we doing, and so.
Right. We do identify that the district has a early childhood through age 21. The two early childhood centers are Pond and Southwood. The alternative learning centers are Beacon and Under-21 Program. College and career, we do not pull out that as part of the high schools.
Oh, okay. Yeah, but what you said about goal number one, it does make sense, that it sort of includes this. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Hearing none. All in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. That brings us to our policy review. Shall we start with revised policy 408, subpoena of a school district employee? Someone like to move it? Thank you.
Be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves revised policy 408, subpoena of a school district employee.
Second.
Thank you.
Have comments?
Thank you.
School boards are mandated by state law to have this policy. Administration is recommending that policy 408 be revised by replacing the current language with the MSBA model policy language. The board policy committee and administration reviewed the model policy language. They made minor edits to the model policy language. Therefore, administration and the board policy committee recommends adoption of this revised policy, proposed revised policy by the board.
Thank you. Is there any discussion about this?
Madam Chair, I'd just like to say I appreciate the efforts of the policy committee for doing all the hard work on these.
And the policy committee would like to extend their appreciation to the administration for actually doing all of the work on this, and all we had to do was come in and read it.
Right. This one was an easy one.
All right. If there's no further comments or questions, all in favor of the revised policy 408, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Yeah, I was just going to point out that federal and state law are different on that policy. One requires the release of information by subpoena, the other one prohibits it.
Oh, interesting.
So they're not talking to each other?
They're not talking to each other.
Well, thank you.
Which one are we in line with?
We stick with the state.
Okay. I think we'll be good.
All right. As long as you're protecting us, that's what we want to know. That brings us to revised policy 808, district crisis management. Does someone like to move that? Thank you.
Be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves revised policy 808, district crisis management policy.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Would you like to speak to this one?
Madam Chair, Baralata, Superintendent Fujitaki, members of the school board. This is also a required policy by the state, and we have modeled it after Minnesota School Board Association. The revision, however, condenses the multi-page MSBA policy to this one-page district policy that does align with all of the things that are required in that policy, which is specifically that we provide guidelines for a comprehensive emergency operation recovery plan, as well as building level safety plans regarding intervention, prevention, management, response, and recovery.
Thank you. Any questions or comments regarding this policy?
Nim's in here.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor of revised policy 808, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No.
Thank you.
Thank you. Brings us to revised policy 413, harassment and violence. Someone like to make that motion? Thank you.
Madam Chair, be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves revised policy 413, harassment and violence.
Second.
Thank you. Our Human Resources Director, Mary Burrows, and Director of Learning Support, Andy Kova, is here to talk to this one. Thank you.
Chair Baralata, Superintendent Fujitaki, members of the board. I kind of want to say ditto to what Superintendent Fujitaki said on the first one. This is a state-mandated policy, and I'm recommending that the board move to MSBA model policy language. We have a few changes in the model just to reflect our district's board-specified language, but nothing substantial. Our regulations are updated to reflect the different reporting structures in elementary and secondary, and to inform parents of what they need to do. But that's the only difference from model, so.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
So this, if you remember... So this, if you remember our last meeting, I had mentioned, let's see here, it says maintain a learning and working environment that is free from harassment and violence on the basis of race, color, creed, religion, national origin, sex, age, marital status, familial status, and on and on. And what I had suggested is it says to maintain a learning and working environment that is free from harassment and violence, but as Mary Burrows has mentioned, that there are legal definitions of harassment and violence, and so that's what we are following in line here for. And so if we feel like we would like to include everybody and not just federally protected classes, that we would need to look at another policy for that.
Okay.
Did I paraphrase you fairly closely?
Yes, there's a legal definition of harassment, and that's what this policy is relating to.
Right.
Madam Chair, this is another one that was, is intended to be reviewed annually because as Director Lea said, all those categories, classifications, and everything else might be changed again next year through legislation, government, whatever it is. Another category maybe, so it is wise for us to review this on an annual basis.
That is correct. Anyone else? Hearing none, all in favor of revised policy four thirteen, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? No. Brings us to new policy four twenty-six, nepotism in employment. Would someone like to move that resolution?
Madam Chair. Be resolved, the School Board of Independent School District two seventy-one approves new policy four twenty-six, nepotism in, in employment.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Doc.
Mary Burrows. Chair Bartolata Superintendent Fujitaki, members of the board. Again, this is a new policy. The purpose of the policy is to prevent situations where an individual may have or be perceived to have favoritism in employment's circumstances such as compensation, annual reviews, job offerings, et cetera. So this policy prevents certain reporting structures and hiring structures.
Thank you. Any questions?
And I can't remember, this is a new policy, did we have any kind of policy, regulation in another policy that dealt with these situations?
No, we haven't previously. This is a mandatory policy for all charter schools in Minnesota, and it's also being adapted by many public education, non-charter, you know, public schools as well. We did use a model language from the MSBA that they use for charter schools for this policy with some changes to, to our wording of how we would like to do it, but nothing substantial.
Okay, then I might add that we're, it's one of the benefits of belonging to MSBA because they have a staff that keeps up on this so much that it's really good to keep in touch with them and they in touch with us with all the districts in terms of what might be coming up or what is new and could be controversial or under significant discussion. So thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Hearing no further discussion, all in favor of new policy four twenty-six, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? None. Next up, revised policy seven oh two point two, general public funds handling procedures.
Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Be resolved, the School Board of Independent School District two seventy-one approves revised policy seven oh two point two, general public funds handling procedures.
Second.
Thank you. Our Executive Director of Finance is here to discuss this. Thank you.
Chair Bartolata Superintendent Fujitaki, board members, this is not a mandatory policy, but this is a policy that we just mainly updated for the new terms of electronic cash and the rest. Nothing real change to the overall policy itself.
Okay. Any comments, questions? Go ahead.
I was gonna mention that part of our discussion, if you look under the regulations letter H, no credit to anyone for any reason without approval from the Executive Director of Finance and Support Services. We just wanted to clarify that, that in no way is to mean that the school is going to act as a bank. One of the situations that could potentially arise would be, say, a person's payroll check was higher than it was supposed to be, and instead of, of saying, okay, well now you have to pay us back all the money right now, a, for instance, could be that they, we would let them repay it over a set period of time when it was in our air to begin with.
Okay.
So that was a question that came up.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing none, all in favor of revised policy seven oh two point two, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? No. Next, we have revised policy seven oh two point three, personal vehicle expense. Director Zep.
Be resolved, the School Board of Independent School District two seventy-one approves the revised policy seven oh two point three, personal vehicle expense.
Second. Thank you. Would you like to address this?
This is another policy that is not a mandatory policy, but we just more of revised it with some simple language changes to be more in line with what we needed it to be.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
After reading this again, there was one thing I wasn't sure if we needed to clarify, if it was necessary or not. It says reimbursement for required travel in personal vehicle, we made it the standard mileage rate for business is set by Internal Revenue Service. Do we need to clarify at the time that the expense was incurred? Because if I incurred it now and I'm in December, and then in January it's a new rate, I mean, is it, do we need to say that? Or is that generally implied?
It's generally implied, and what we usually do is if people do, some, do people do submit it that way, we make sure that in our verification process that we allocate it based on the time when that rate was at certain levels.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of revised policy seven oh two point three, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? None. Brings us to revised policy seven oh seven, transportation. Someone like to move it? Thank you.
Madam Chair. Be resolved, the School Board of Independent School District two seventy-one approves revised policy seven oh seven, transportation.
Second. Thank you. Director Zepovich and, I'm sorry, I forgot your, Tim?
Tim Rebackar, Director of.
Thank you, thank you.
Director of Operations.
Sorry.
This policy is a mandatory policy. What we've done here is we've merged it with the MSBA policy, and we've kind of allocated the rest of the terminology within regulations from that point forward. So really, nothing much changed from the initial policy that was here before, we just kind of condensed it into the MSBA model.
Thank you. Any questions?
Jim, you wanted to read all the regulations. Yes, thank you. Being on the policy committee, this one was certainly extensive, sixty-some pages, so anybody, I hope everybody got a chance to read it with all the different definitions and understandings that are in there. I had to read it about three times in order to get to sleep, but the, there was a couple of questions that we had in here as we're discussing it, and sometimes it talks about the fact that we have all-day kindergarten now, and some of the bus rides where children are picked up at a location, and typically, there's parents or adults or somebody there with the kids, sometimes not, but when we drop the students off, maybe there are some parents there, or maybe not two. And so a concern was, nothing in here in the policy was about how do we make sure a responsible adult or that the students know they're getting off at the right bus and everything. Some of the complications of the student drop-offs of the younger kids at their different levels, I don't know if, if there's many discussion coming up about that, but we didn't find anything in the policy on that.
And we are actually having a meeting on Friday in regards to the preschool students, meeting with Carolyn Hutner and Tam receve about that particular issue to make sure that whatever procedures that we have in place are adequate for those younger age students. It's just a preliminary meeting to put the topic on the table, and we can definitely keep you informed.
Various times, we go to different meetings, locations, and so forth, and people have questions about this or that, or there was an incident or non-incident, or just a general question about, you know, who picks up the kid after school? If, if grandpa or grandma or mom or dad can't, and the child is left there, does he go home with somebody else or what? So that's good that you're addressing that in terms of, if, if not in the policy, just general procedures.
Thank you. Anyone else, Director?
One, one quick question. So sixty-two pages, this particular one looks like it's, it's, it's a policy that members of the public would, if they're going to have any interaction with policies, this one they'd be interested in because their kiddos are getting on the buses and often. If I'm a, a parent in the, in the district and I have a student or three that are getting on the buses, and I have a question about this policy, do I call the transportation department? Do I, how do I know where to go to get my question answered?
Yes, the discussion, the, any questions regarding the policy itself should go to the transportation department.
All right, so for our viewing audience, they can, don't call the board, call the transportation department.
And also, you know, kind of looking at, this is a kind of a, a perfect example of the, the difference of governance and management within policy work is, the policy part is a very short, two-page, laying out what the administration should do and what the board is asking them to do. What the regulations are showing is what administration is making sure that everything meets what the board has asked us to do.
Thank you. Director Bennett, do you have a question?
Oh, no, never mind.
Okay. Anyone else? Hearing none, all in favor of revised policy seven oh seven, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, thank you. And that brings us to the end of our policy revisions, reviews. Next, we have our audit report, two thousand fourteen fifteen, our annual report. Matt Meyer, welcome. And Roger Pritch. No snow for you this year.
Won't live that one down.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Superintendent, thanks for the invitation to present tonight. I'm here to make my annual presentation on the results of your financial audit for the last school year, and then take a little bit of time to provide you some financial analysis as well, give you some perspective on the district's financial position at the end of the year and the results of operations. As you're aware, the district has a responsibility each year to prepare financial statements for the public, and it's my firm's job to test, examine, and give an opinion on those statements so that users of them can be assured of their accuracy. We do that through our independent auditors' report, which you'll find in front of the financial statements. It's an unmodified opinion, the best we can provide, and that means that the numbers we're looking at tonight are a true picture of the district's financial position and changes in financial position for the last school year. We also do some compliance work. The federal government requires that we look at the major programs that you receive through them. This year, we tested the Title I and the Child Nutrition Program for compliance, and happy to report no findings there. And then the Office of the State Auditor also requires us to test the district and various state statutes that apply to school districts in Minnesota. Had one relatively minor finding regarding the timing of a payment. It was a relatively isolated incident, but we did bring it to your attention this evening. Also happy to report no internal control findings that rose to the level of significant efficiency or material weakness. So I think a very clean audit for the two thousand fifteen school year, unmodified opinion on the numbers, clean opinion on your federal programs, and one housekeeping item to be aware of when it comes to Minnesota Leo compliance, so. With that, I'd like to take a little bit of time just to provide you some perspective on how the year ended financially for you, and I think the best place to do that always is in the context of your budget. As a board, you establish through policy the parameters for spending during the year, and it's administration's job to execute that budget on your behalf. So it's a relatively busy chart here, but just to get to the bottom line in each of these columns, you approve both an original and a final amended budget that called for about an eleven million dollar spend down in your general fund balance during the year. And if we take a look at the actual results, which are in the third column there, you're going to see that revenue came in a little bit better than anticipated by about a million and a half dollars or so. There is some other local revenue that we recognized this year at the site level, which I'll talk about in a little bit, that drove other revenue up about one point four million dollars over budget. State revenue, the general education money that you receive came in over budget by about two million dollars or so, special ed about three hundred thousand dollars, and federal sources appear to be significantly under budget. That was a conscious decision on the timing of spending of some of the federal grants, mostly related to special education during the year. But in the end, again, about one point five million dollars over budget on the revenue. When it came to spending, you provided a budget that called for a hundred and forty-three million dollars worth of spending, and ultimately, a hundred and forty-one million dollars was spent. So you came under budget by about two million dollars, about one and a half percent, and you can see under most of the major categories, you came in under budget by program by program throughout. The one category being significantly over, but still a relatively small percentage amount was regular instruction, about one point two million dollars there or so. That, in the end, then, rather than eleven million dollars of spending down, is about a seven point two million dollar spend down of the fund balance from two thousand fourteen to two thousand fifteen, and I've got a chart that'll show you a little bit better perspective of that fund balance as we get to that in a little bit. As we look at the funding of the school, we have to be conscious of your student count and what's, what's happening when it comes to changes with that, and we want to keep an eye, first of all, on your resident AEDMs. That's been a relatively static number the last few years. You've had declines from two thousand thirteen and two thousand fourteen, a little bit of an uptick here in two thousand fifteen to ten thousand six hundred and sixty-three students, public school students living within the district boundaries. After that, we have to take into account the effects of open enrollment, as well as the new waiting system that the state has implemented. They simplified the waiting for two thousand fifteen. In the past, there were multiple versions for your elementary students. Every elementary student now received a one point oh value, and along with that came the all-day kindergarten funding that you're aware of as well. The secondary went from one point three to one point two, and the reason I bring that up is because the numbers going forward when it comes to pupil units or weighted average daily membership, which is the number on which you're paid as a district, changed significantly. They adjusted the formula so that the dollar value you receive per waiting was also modified, so you were held harmless in the end. But as you try to make comparisons going forward on your pupil units, or again, the number of students on which you're paid, there's going to be a disparity from two thousand fourteen to two thousand fifteen and going forward because of that change in the waiting system. You see a relatively large drop from two thousand fourteen to two thousand fifteen, but to give you some perspective, you would have been down a little bit under the old waiting system, but the number would have been about eleven thousand seven ninety-five, so probably about a thirty pupil unit drop under the old waiting system. That's exaggerated because of the new waiting system, and again, you were held harmless because of the additional monies received with that change. Want to take a quick look at the revenue stream in your general fund, and this is kind of what I would say back to normal. After a lot of years of shuffling money around because of challenges at the state, you're seeing a relatively normal and stable year that we hope to see for the foreseeable future here. That means about twenty-five percent of your general fund revenues come from local property taxpayers, about seventy percent come from the state of Minnesota in various state aides, and about five percent come from other sources, the federal government and other local revenues. Twenty fourteen showed that local property taxes were exaggerated, low amounts, and back in two thousand eleven, they were exaggerated high. That's because the state borrowed from you about thirteen million dollars on the tax shift, and they, we shuffled some dollars between state aides and local property taxes. So again, two thousand fifteen is a relatively stable year, that would be the benchmark that I would use going forward as far as ratios go. For the year, revenue was up about seven percent, and that's a big factor related to the, the all-day kindergarten funding was the main reason for that, going from two thousand fourteen to two thousand fifteen numbers. If we look at spending in the general fund, again, most of the categories are relatively stable. Spending was up about sixteen million dollars from one year to the next, one hundred and twenty-five million in fourteen, one hundred and forty-one million in fifteen. Most of that, again, though, was the infrastructure as well as the operating cost of establishing an all-day kindergarten for about nine hundred to a thousand kindergarten students here at the district during the year. You also made significant one-time expenditures, spending down some reserves that you had for capital needs, technology and the like throughout the year, and I'll show those spend downs in a little bit as well. When it came down to it, though, about two-thirds of your spending still goes directly to the classroom for instructional costs. And this one's a very difficult one to see, and I apologize ahead of that, ahead of time for it, but. for it, but what we're trying to show on this chart is all the set-asides that the district has regarding its fund balance. And as we saw earlier, there was a spend down of fund balance overall from about thirty-three million dollars to twenty-six million dollars from twenty fourteen to twenty fifteen. But the point I'd like to make is if we look at that bottom line, that unassigned number, you can see that remained relatively stable and actually went up from one year to the next. And that unassigned number represents the discretionary fund balance or the financial health of the district. The district has chosen to set aside many different set-asides for commitments. These are projects that you have labeled as important to you, that you want to have specific dollars for, and you can see that there are set-asides for transportation, transportation building, operating referendum dollars, and you can also see from twenty fourteen to twenty fifteen that you did some spending down of those in the areas of energy saving, security system, technology replacement. That had a lot to do with that spending down of fund balance that I was talking about earlier. Some of the dollars are restricted up on top there, and those are dollars that come from the state with strings attached. If you don't spend them on the state mandated purpose for that particular aid, you need to set them aside going forward. So, while they're, they're part of your fund balance and your financial health, they are not dollars that you, as a Board, have discretion over, you need to spend them for that particular purpose. So, again, after all the set-asides, whether they be internal from commitments or external from the state, the ultimate number is that unassigned number, that's six million one eighty-seven. I was also asked to talk specifically about an assigned number that is new this year, the Site four oh two funds, and these are local contributions. The local sites, the school buildings themselves have the discretion on how they want to use these donations. In the past, they were set aside as a liability until they were spent. That number had grown to the point where, according to accounting standards, we needed to recognize those as revenue, and those fell to fund balance this year, additional revenue over and above anticipated amounts for twenty fifteen, and they'll be set aside so the decision-makers associated with those funds, which are administrations at the local buildings, will draw from that equity account going forward. So, again, another set aside that we want to keep away from your discretionary amount so that you're conscious of what the true number is, and that's that unassigned number each year. Want to give you some perspective on where you are financial, health-wise. In the past years, you're right around the twenty-five percent mark. When we look at fund balances, this is simply your fund balance total divided by the expenditures on an annual basis. You're at about twenty-five percent, where a typical district was in the low twenty percent range. After some one-time spending on some of the capital that we talked about, some of the investments that you made for the all-day kindergarten, you can see the fund balance did go down fairly significantly from twenty fourteen to twenty fifteen, from about a twenty-five percent fund balance to an eighteen percent fund balance. Again, that's a policy decision, that's an internal number that you're going to establish as a Board where you'd like to land, you've got a fund balance policy that dictates where you want to land on that. But just to give you some perspective on where you lie with your peers, that green bar is all school districts statewide that serve more than four thousand students, so that gives you some perspective. In prior years, you were exceeding that amount. It looks like for twenty fifteen that you fall a little bit below the state average when it comes to financial health or fund balance overall. Want to wrap things up with just a quick look at two other funds. One is the Food Service Fund, had a relatively break-even year. We set all the activity aside for food service in a special fund, and that basically broke even with about a hundred thousand dollar drop in fund balance. It still remains very healthy with nearly a twenty percent fund balance to end the year. And then finally, the Community Service Fund. Spending in this fund was down significantly from twenty fourteen to twenty fifteen because the Kinder Plus program now became obsolete with the all-day kindergarten. There were some investments in school readiness, and this, this fund, again, will have some other objectives in future years, but spending was relatively down from twenty fourteen to twenty fifteen and actually posted a surplus for the year, about three hundred thousand dollars. So, ended the year with a fund balance of about two and a half million dollars for future spending, future investments in the community service, community education side. So, I will leave it at that. I hopefully gave you a high-level overview of each of your funds, showed where you ended the year, and gave you some perspective on budget compliance for the year, but if there's any questions that you had that I didn't cover, be happy to stay for those.
Director, sir.
Gee whiz, Matt, there's still, it's a lot of graphs in there that you didn't talk about.
Which one would you like me to head back?
I was just going to say, that was just the, I think it was just the, the general fund financial position.
Alright.
Back, you know, I don't, I'm not.
That one, that's a difficult.
Number thirteen, I think.
Okay. Go back there.
Yeah.
Great.
And I can appreciate your, your going through it and giving us the summary information, but being that I like to see all these. Yeah, just explain a little bit that.
Yeah, I'd be happy to. The, the point here in this bar is that we can view this, the district's financial health in two ways. The best way is to look at fund balance, which is the purple portion of the bar. That represents all the district's assets and all the district's liabilities. That's the number that you, as a Board, have control over, the spending decisions that you make, the budget that you approve is going to drive that number from year to year. And as we talked about earlier, you approved a budget that called for spending down a fund balance, so you'd anticipate that that would actually go down from twenty fourteen to twenty fifteen, and it did, not to the level that you called for, about seven million versus the eleven million that we talked about. The other way to look at it, which is important, but what, that you don't have a lot of control over, is the cash balance, and that's basically your checkbook balance in your general fund. And that actually was higher than your fund balance during the year because we had payables that hadn't yet been paid from the general fund, that it kept your cash balance higher than that. What, why that number is all over the place, when we go back over the course of the last five years, is that that number is dictated by the metering that the state establishes for you. They pay you when they choose to based on legislation and based on administration decisions at the Minnesota Department of Education, and that has varied from ninety cents on the dollar in fourteen and fifteen, all the way down to sixty-three cents on the dollar during the school year back in twenty twelve. So, back in twenty twelve, you were trying to run the school on sixty cents of the dollar that you're going to get from the state. The other dollar eventually came, the rest of that dollar came, but it was after the school year was over, all your students had graduated and came in the summer months. So, that puts significant cash flow pressure on you, so if not for the, that healthy fund balance back in twenty twelve, twenty thirteen, you would have been in a deficit cash position like many districts that I work with were, and had actually had to go out for cash flow borrowing during those times. Right now, things are probably as good as they're going to get. You're on a ninety-ten payout from the state. That tax money that they borrowed from you, thirteen million dollars, that's been paid back, and you actually got two percent funding increases in that last, in the last couple of years. So, it's an opportunity to do what you did this year, I think, in making some investments. But again, be conscious of the fact that things can turn relatively quickly. Going back to twenty twelve, that was only three years ago, and we were talking about a sixty, sixty-three percent metering from the state. So, hopefully that answered your question, I'd be happy to elaborate.
Yes, it did, and it graphically illustrates how stable we were with the fund balance as we needed it to go through with the green lines, you know, going through, like other districts, you said, had to borrow money and incurred some additional interest and all that other sort of stuff, but yet we managed to do it with our, in our, with our financial stability over those years. That was a good, good illustration. Thank you.
So, on the next, very next slide, it has the unrestricted fund balance.
Yes.
And I'm looking at this eighteen percent, and I know we have a Board policy of having a five percent fund balance, so is this as simple as, this is three times what our policy dictates, or is it more complicated than that?
Exactly, that's a great question, and I can, I can respond to it, or if you'd like to go, go ahead.
What this, this includes is both transportation, operating capital, and the general fund itself, and also capital projects levy. So, it's, it's a combination of four different funds that we keep separately within. Where we say our fund balance goal is, we talk about just the general, operating general fund. We have also a Board policy for transportation of another million dollars of, for operating capital of another million dollars, and so you have to kind of look at the three of them separately, and the five percent that we talk about for the general fund operation is what you see for the unassigned down at the bottom of the, on just under six point two million dollars.
Okay, so is this, would this be all of those added up, all the unrestricted funds? So, if we so chose, we could put all that into the, just hypothetically speaking, put that in the general fund and we would have an eighteen percent fund balance?
The committed funds, except for severance, I believe.
Yes, I believe so, yeah.
Everything except for severance would be able to be, to moved to the general fund itself. The only other ones that we have there that we've made some commitments internally are your band uniforms and your instruments and your athletics and those type of pieces also.
To make sure there's an apples-to-apples comparison across the state, the state doesn't acknowledge your internal set-asides at all. So, the commitments that you're doing internally, while they're valued to you and they certainly help you track it, they're not acknowledged at the state level. So, that's why that number is significantly higher than the internal policy. So, again, when I talked about, just to echo Rod's thoughts, that unassigned number is your scorecard, and that's the number that you divide that into your spending of above, I think it came up to about four and a half or five percent for the year. So, use that unassigned value, and that's going to give you some perspective. And that's a great question because there are a number of ways to calculate the fund balances. The state uses one, you use another internally here, and it's just make sure that we're understanding what methodology we're using for that.
So, do we know what the current percentage of our general fund unrestricted fund balance is then? I think that'd be a question more for Rod.
Can we re, re, what question?
Because we're supposed to be at five percent. I know we're not, eighteen percent. Do you know where we're actually at? What our current unassigned general fund, fund balance is?
I'd have to, to look at that. I mean, we're, we're ending fund balance, I believe, is about ten point five.
Percent or a million?
Ten point five million dollars. And so, you know, really what, if you really want to see what the general fund number is, if you take the unassigned and the referendum, those are the dollars that we have. If you see referendum, committed.
This number, please, number you on here?
Twelve.
Twelve?
Fourth, it's, what is it? Four million two seventy-nine.
Okay.
If you take that and then your unassigned number, that's what we have as part of when we talk about the general fund or when we do projection models.
Okay. Well, yeah, I just wanted to clarify because, I mean, this is a, this gets kind of confusing when people look at this and they say, whoa, they have eighteen percent, and they say that, you know, we only have five and we're three times that size, so thanks for clarifying all that for me.
Any other questions?
Well, I have another question. No one else has, and I was just looking at the, let's see what page was, I think it was seven? Six and seven, or where was I? About the, no, resident ADM.
Okay.
Where it shows that we have more ADMs leaving than coming in, so, but when we're looking at the World's Best Workforce Report earlier, it shows that we had, I think it was a hundred and eighteen more students coming in than leaving, so I don't know, can you clarify that and make that, make sense for me?
The only thing I, I mean, and I'll have Rick jump in on it too, but I think at the World's Best Workforce, what we're looking at is students going from a school district to another school district. Where we lose more in addition is students going to charter schools.
Okay, so do we, and actual students, do we have more students coming in to the district, or do we have more students leaving?
From, from, from school district to school district, yes, we do.
Okay. But the ones that are leaving are more like homeschooled or?
Or chartered.
Okay. Okay, alright.
Any other questions? Hearing none, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. It brings us to committed funds resolution. Would someone like to make that resolution?
I'll read it. Be resolved, the School Board of Independent School District two seventy-one approves committed funds in the area specified as follows. Committed funds, number one, one hundred and eighty-two thousand thirty for third-party medical assistance, number two, sixty-six thousand fifty-five dollars for wellness dollars, number three, eighty-nine thousand six hundred and thirty-three for band uniform and instrument replacement, number four, four million dollars, four million two hundred and seventy-nine thousand four hundred and five for operating referendum, number five, one million for transportation building, number six, one million for transportation bus purchase, number seven, three million seven hundred and ninety-three thousand three hundred and sixty for transportation, number eight, two million four hundred and sixty-one thousand six hundred and twenty-seven for severance insurance, number nine, ninety-five thousand seven hundred and ninety-five thousand nine hundred and seventy-six for athletics and activities, ten, two hundred and sixty-two thousand seven hundred and sixty-nine for staff development, eleven, eighty-two thousand six hundred for Q count.
Second.
Thank you. And our Director of Finance, Rod Zikvich, is still here to answer any questions. But you want to make a statement?
This is, this was just some of the discussion we just had within these categories. If, if you're looking at these categories as we're going down, the third-party billing, the wellness, band uniforms, athletics, and staff development are all pretty much ones that are, that we have set aside, that we've made agreements to people that we would carry those dollars over for them in specific areas. The other ones of transportation is kind of how we run it as a separate business, and we put that aside. The severance has to be set aside based on what our future projections are for accounting purposes. So, really, the, the two that you're looking at for the general fund, as I just mentioned, is number four, and then the number six that you just, I mean, the unassigned that you saw up on the Board.
Thank you. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor of resolution regarding committed funds, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Madam Chair, I just had a question. Do we need to approve the audit report, per se?
The audit report will be approved at the end because the, you have to approve these two pieces because these are in the audit report.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone opposed? None, thank you. It brings us to assigned funds. Would someone like to move this resolution?
Madam Chair?
Thank you.
Be resolved, the School Board of Independent School District two seventy-one approves assigned funds for site-controlled fee and/or donation accounts in the amount of six hundred ninety-six thousand nine hundred and eight dollars.
Your second? Thank you. Director Zikvich?
As Matt mentioned in his presentation, this was a new audit, auditor's requirement of us to move this from a liability to a fund balance, and so we wanted to move it to the best way to clarify this into a signed fund balance.
Any questions? Well, thank you very much. All in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. One more. Acceptance of the audit report. Mr. Stone.
Thank you. It resolves, the School Board of Independent, number two seventy-one, accepts the audit reports from Bergen KDD Limited, which includes audited financial statements, audited financial statements of student activities accounts, and accompanying communication letters for the fiscal year ended June thirtieth, twenty fifteen.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Director Zikvich?
You have received all four of the reports, and Matt has just given you a high level of the main financial statement report.
Any questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor of accepting the audit report, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? None.
Thank you.
Alright.
Madam Chair, just another observation too, that I think this is really, really slick that we have everything electronically now, instead of the stacks of paper we used to get when we used to have audit reports and go through all those individual papers. This is really, makes it a little bit ea, a lot easier to accept.
Thank you. It brings us to number eight, which is a revisitation of a subject that we've had much discussion on before, the televising of board study sessions. This topic has been brought up a few times, most recently at the PTSA Council Forum that we had for candidates running for reelection or election to the school board. At that time, it was discussed, we got no comments, no public input saying, oh yeah, we forgot about that, either way. So, Director Bergstrom, this is your?
It, it is, it was, and it still is. I did build in a expiration date on this one, and the reason I did that was so that the same people could have the conversation, I didn't want to pass it on to somebody else depending on the outcome of an election. You know, I, I have not heard from new people coming knocking on my door. You know, I have not heard from new people coming knocking on my door, calling me up, writing emails. I haven't really heard, I just haven't heard a lot about it. So I'm not inclined to change my opinion from eleven months ago, I think it was. I really, like you said, we've spoken a lot about it. I, the intent was to facilitate conversation. I, I don't know how we can quantify that. I don't know how we can put it on a graph and chart it and say conversation is better or it's worse. It's kind of a nebulous subject, but that was the intent behind the motion.
Thank you.
I don't see why I would change my vote.
So this is your opportunity, if you have anything, any input to make?
Well, is there, is there a motion then to maintain not televising? Or there is no motion to discuss?
Currently not a motion, but that that is the intent of this, to revisit the conversation, to see whether we want to go thumbs up or thumbs down.
Well, the motion, it didn't have an actual timeline, timeline on the actual motion, doesn't expire. It stays in place until it's repealed, correct?
Yep.
Okay, so.
This is that.
I'm sure I didn't think that there was a time sunset clause in that, in that motion.
Well, I used expiration date, but I, what I intended that way, we would have this conversation.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, it's good to have the conversation.
Yeah.
I'll just throw in that, in, after the PTSA Council Forum brought it up again, I called up the board chairs of five different local boards, just to see what they did. And there's not one of them, Eden Prairie, Edina, Hopkins, Richfield, or St. Louis Park, that broadcast their study sessions. Some record them, audio record them. But on a whole, they, oh, the, one of the school districts, the man said, well, why would you want to do that? So, you know, it just doesn't seem to make sense to others either to broadcast the workshops. So I don't know if anybody else has any comments or?
Well, I guess I'll try and share what thoughts we had last time too, that every once in a while, you just, you just need to have a time where you can have an informal, the board needs to consider topics or issues or concerns in a more informal setting that everybody can can talk about. And opinions can be expressed, varying positions can be identified and so forth, without having, without having the intimidation of a camera being on them and recording a situation whereby, especially if something is taken out of context, which has been done in the past and then used, used in opposition. So I just think we have a formal board meeting and anything can be brought to the formal board meeting and discussed, if it's controversial or otherwise. And and we just need an informal time. We have done some retreats informally that have been closed, but every, every study session is open to the public. And so therefore, anybody who wants to find out about it, it's published ahead of time that we'll be having study sessions, they can come and they can observe the study session going on. Board meetings will allow for somebody to speak on a particular issue. If they have a question, they can come at that. Typically, study sessions are information gathering by the board with various curriculum or various administrators, where we just need to find out a little bit more about what's going on.
I just want to clarify, the retreats are not closed.
Thank you. I was going to say that. They're still open.
Yeah.
How come nobody attends them?
We do.
Well, they could, I mean, though.
They're posted.
Public could come in and want to see, would have to.
Get coffee, get coffee.
Yeah.
Me, you know, it's all right.
Went over that in MSBA training.
Go ahead. Just wanted to clarify. No close.
What I wanted to possibly contribute to the conversation is if there's things that we're talking about at study sessions that we felt, actually should have had them televised, then, you know, maybe we need to rethink what our study sessions are. For instance, is after our last Youth Advisory Council meeting, we, and I was going to share this in the board member reports, but now would be a good time to do it. We have an invitation to attend the Kennedy High School and the Jefferson High School Student Council meetings, student government meetings. Now, if all seven of us board meeting, board members show up, that would then be a study session or a work session, meeting that would have to be posted. Because we can't all show up, even if it's just for the purposes of of gathering information. We had run that issue and we were all going to meet over transportation. And then we said, no, we actually can't do that because that's an open meeting. We have to post it if we're going to do that, inform the public that we're meeting there, even though it's just information gathering. And so if we wanted to go to the Kennedy High School and we said, well, we're going to televise all study sessions, would we necessarily want to be on TV with the students doing their student government meeting while we're gathering information? And so maybe that's not the appropriate time to have it televised. And so, but if there are things that we're discussing at a, at a study session that we're having here, that we say, you know, this would be better at a general board meeting, we should maybe consider that as something different. Does that make sense?
Not really.
No?
Well, that example, it's not a, wouldn't be a study session if we all went to, it wouldn't be a study session or even an open meeting if we all went to view a student government meeting. It would only be a study session or or an open meeting if we conducted business as a board.
It would still be their meeting, right?
If we're the spectators.
Yeah.
We all go to many things that we're all there.
David? If we're spectators, we're not.
That, that's their meeting.
Joining in, not that it's not an open meeting.
If we go, if we ourselves meet with the intention of gathering information from another group, that is an open meeting.
But it wouldn't be a, I think it's debatable, but it definitely wouldn't be a, a study session.
We have a attorney here.
What say you, David?
Well, anytime a quorum meets to discuss or enact things, then yes, it's a public meeting. You could go, all could go to a lecture somewhere or other, and that's not an open meeting, even though all of you are there.
So like our Youth Advisory Council meeting that we had earlier today, we post, that's public, right? We post that publicly? We have a Youth Advisory Council, we all show up?
It's a public meeting, but it's not a study session. So we could go and and have a, be there and say it's an open meeting and post it, but it's still not a study session because we're not conducting any board business.
Well, in a sense, it is a study session because we're gathering with a group of individuals to get information from them. In the past, from a historical perspective, in the past, we've met at a high school and we've discussed curriculum at a high school. We met at the Jefferson Room and we met over at Kennedy. We've met at the Valley View. We've had study sessions at all those different facilities to discuss particular things pertinent to that school or subjects to that school. And it was, and we, it was just cumbersome to bring a camera and everything else to go over there like that. So we decided, we'll just have a study session, we'll talk about the seventh grade, middle school model, something like that. So we all met and we all were gathering information, it was a nice informational setting, where we gathered whatever questions we had. And and then all of a sudden later on, when it was brought to the board in a special session by the middle schools about the seven, sixth, seventh, eighth grade models, then we discussed it further, then we took action on it as a board. So there's information gathering that needs to go on and it could go on anywhere. And it has gone on anywhere and it hasn't been televised and we've gotten information, we've shared it with the public. Public was invited, parents came to those sessions and watched and observed what was going on. So it, it was done and it wasn't necessary to have it televised to, to bring people there. They all know that it's, that it's available for them to attend. And and to have it televised just isn't necessary.
I think we're kind of getting off off topic here because no one's advocating filming, recording every meeting. We're not going to, no one's saying, let's record policy committee meetings or youth advisory meetings. We're talking about our normal scheduled study sessions, not every meeting that we go to throughout the course of the month. That, no one's saying that. So I don't know where we're going down that route. We're talking about the actual study sessions that we have here.
Study session can be somewhere else. It doesn't have to be here.
But they haven't been.
But that's something that the board would decide on, right? It's, you know, what kind of, like you said before, what kind of study sessions we're televising? And we're talking about the study sessions that were, that are being conducted here.
Monday of the month, study sessions.
That's what we're talking about, what was done before, that's all.
And it doesn't have to be here.
They were trying to make it more complicated than it really is.
Well, the board meetings don't have to be here. We could have a meeting wherever we, we call and give, do notice.
Just has to be within the confines of the district.
Yeah.
Seventy-two hour notice, isn't it? Tahiti. Your house.
Well, I don't know, do we need further discussion? Does someone want to make a motion?
I don't know if anyone's opinions have changed. I mean, I don't know if we really need to rehash the.
I do have an opinion and everybody knows here where I stand in this, in this particular topic. And, you know, as much as I respect everybody on this board, I have to express my deep frustration with this type of conversation and how it ends up being the same over and over again. I mean, I don't know who we are talking to, but I have been talking to people too. And I have heard from many different people, including the people that are very close to our school community, saying over and over again, can we have the study sessions back? Because it showed that it was very helpful for a lot of people to be able to stay informed and to know why decisions were being made at the table during the board meetings. And I know that, you know, I mean, what difference has it really made in the past year? I really haven't seen anything much different. We all try to stay very respectful at the table. We are all very diplomatic here, I believe. You know, our administrators bring enough information to share, very relevant professional information. Everybody is very professional. The way that are, that they are speaking, even when they come here for, for the school board meetings and presentations, everything looks just fine. So I don't know why the hesitation of having those coming back and being on TV. I understand that some people get nervous. Well, you all still come here to the front, you know, to the, and here in front of us for your presentations when we have school board meetings and they're televised. I mean, and everybody does perfectly well and you all look really good on TV. So all of us, seriously, I mean, what is the big deal about this? We got seniors here asking us over and over again, can we, can we watch those? Or I used to see the meetings, you know, I used to watch them, but now I don't even know what's going on. Because, you know, how did you decide or how did you come up with this? So I don't know, even during this campaigning time, I talk to people, and especially the seniors. They cannot make it here. When are we going to understand that there are a lot of people that are walking around with oxygen tanks? They're not able to come here, especially in the wintertime. And they deserve to have this kind of information. This is the kind of thing that they sit down in front of the TV and watch. They do it. Now, our PTSA people too, the same thing. I don't know, you know, everybody has been talking to the PTSA members. Even they are saying, I have heard them saying, it would be so nice if we could just watch the study sessions. You know? Yeah, of course, we get very nervous in front of the cameras. But we're asking our teachers to perform in front of their students, you know, our administrators to perform in front of very professional people, politicians, you know, different people, our students, our teachers, everybody's doing it. So what is the big deal about this? I just don't get it. You know, we are asking people to support us over and over again. We're going to be reaching out to them when some other tough decisions, you know, are going to be made. Every time we go for a referendum or the school district goes for a referendum, then we go and reach out to them. And now, you know, we're not even informing them. I mean, our school district is very well-run, you know, is a leader. Yeah, a lot of different school districts do not, do not televise their sessions. But it would be nice if they could do it too. I think it would be nice, definitely.
I just wanted to say, people talked about the comments after, you know, what's happened since then. I did get several emails after our last vote telling me I was on the correct side in their opinion of that vote. And I did not get one email that said that they were happy we turned the cameras off. But I got several that said that they did not like the cameras being turned off. Maybe they're not contacting the people that voted that way because they saw the votes and they knew who to contact. But I did get the emails saying that we, that they agreed with me and they thought that I was on the right side of that vote. I just, to me, it just is completely access. Anytime you take something off the TV, you're denying many groups of people access to hear what goes on at that meeting. I mean, we can list all the groups, but it doesn't matter. We're denying access to some people and you can say they can come here, but for whatever reason, many people cannot get here and commit the time to sit here and listen to us live. So, and I don't understand how we can ever expect to ever go out to our public and ask for support, go out for referendums, et cetera, and yet deny the same people that are going to vote access to what we discuss here.
Oh, my gosh, over and over again.
Why, I just, that's just, that's just really exploding the issue. How many, several people, hundreds of senior citizens can't get out there. It sounds like, personally, it sounds like a Sid Hartman commercial about why the Twins game should be televised all the time is because there's so many shut-ins. There's five hundred and sixty thousand shut-ins that have to watch the Twins. This is a very simple thing. We are discussing things informally. We don't have to have any kind of structure. We don't have to have any kind of formality. Maybe we should, and it was mentioned before, maybe we should televise some classrooms of the teachers. You heard the students that last time, they said, whoa, no, you're not televising us. Because the teachers, if teachers, if we televise some classes from the teachers, we'd hear about it from the Federation. You can't be doing that. And it would be random, random selection of classrooms where we just think, I think that would be fun to watch a classroom. And it's not that, and it's not, we're not denying them anything. We can put it, we have many opportunities for people to see, to people to watch, to people to hear. We have great communications to the, to the public when we have our, our newsletters and everything else like that. I just think, as we have heard from counts, from various counselors and other types of professional people, that's, sometimes you just need to have informal sessions where you don't have cameras on and everything is being recorded. And that, and that's what we're just, we're saying is, sometimes we don't. Maybe there will be a special study session where we talk about budgets. Maybe there would be one about referendums. But as a whole, I think it's just serves us well not to have it televised at every single moment.
Then we might as well ask people to not come to the meetings at all, you know? Because we need to have a more informal meeting. I mean, seriously.
It's evidence.
Now, let's talk about our students too. We're talking about a generation that stays informed. We're, we're teaching our kids how to be global citizens. And part of being that is to stay informed. That's why we keep encouraging our kids to do, stay informed, sure. But to stay informed, you have to go directly to the meeting. You don't get to watch it online as you are supposed to do because your generation is an online generation.
Madam Chair?
Yes, please.
Just one quick reminder, the, the reason that I made this motion was to advocate for a minority group to facilitate conversation. It was never intended to shield board members or cabinet members. They're not part of the discussion. A very quiet minority group came to me, found me, and asked, what do you think? I stepped forward and I advocated for that minority group. That's all this is about. It, it's not about anything else. I understand completely the ramifications, understand what it sounds like saying, let's turn the cameras off. I, I, if, if, if there's anyone within the sound of my voice that doesn't think I understood what I was asking, and still I asked. That's all I'm asking. Now, what I'd like to do is make a motion to continue keeping the cameras off. And we can come back to this in another eleven months. So that would be my motion.
I have something else to say before that. And I don't mean, I don't mean to be.
There's an motion on the floor. I'll second the motion.
Now you can speak.
Go ahead, now you can.
Well, yeah, I don't mean to be conflicted. That's, that's not my, my intention and everybody here knows that I, that's never my intention. But, you know, Director Bergstrom, when you talk about minority, who are you talking about? Minority in the, in our, in the people that we are representing, the people that we're serving? Because there's a number of people that is majority, that is the people that have elected us to do this kind of job. So, I don't know, it's just, it's, it's just like I said before, it's just simply frustrating. Let's keep in mind the people that keep asking for these to come back. And like I said before, I deeply respect the job that our administrators do here because they do an excellent job when they're right there in front of the cameras. And they are still here during the school board meetings. They're still doing it. They're still doing it.
Yeah, I just have a clarifying question for Director Berks from, this minority group that you're talking about, is this, I don't want you to divulge who they are, but is this a, a group that regularly speaks to the board at study sessions?
They occasionally come to the board, yes.
Okay, 'cause, I mean, I've only been here two years, but to me, the ones that come to study sessions are school board members, administrators, district employees. So, I mean, and I think the board meetings, that's where we make the students get up there and say who they are. That's where we have parents getting up there, that's where we have people who are addressing the board, and that's all on camera. So, I mean, if that's the reason to turn off the cameras, it seems like it's the other way around, where we should turn the cameras off at the board meetings and televise in the study sessions. Since the study sessions is just us talking, and we're all used to talking on camera, and that's what we get paid to do, and that's what we're elected to do. So, I don't, I don't know if you could clarify that for me?
Well, I don't know if I can go into any more detail without saying who, who it is that's come and, and spoken to me, and I told them that I wouldn't, so...
Well, I understand, I respect that, I don't, I don't expect you to do that.
You know, the, the, the way I view this is, does having the cameras on, does that help us with our study sessions? Does it help us do our job? Or is it a roadblock for some?
I don't think it's a roadblock for anybody. I mean, I've had, I've been here two years, one year with the cameras, one year without the cameras, and I see no difference in our study sessions.
The only difference is that there are a lot of people that are not informed, that's the difference.
Well, if people aren't informed, there's also not a video record of it. That's the important thing. It's not just that there's this huge audience of people watching, it's that the accountability, that there's a video record. If someone wants to say, oh, they're talking about this, I wanna go back and see where the discussion was, instead of calling the district and trying to, quinn of the time, to come listen to an audio recording that's kind of hard to follow, and then not being able to hear that. Whereas if it's a video record, they could go online at any time, anywhere, and see what we discussed. And if your argument is that, well, nobody's watching, well, then why do you care if it's filmed or not, if nobody's watching it? Just film it so it's there. I don't, I really don't understand this reason to stop televising and unnamed minority group who doesn't want to speak in front of the, the camera on study sessions, just isn't enough for me to say, okay, let's stop this video record, let's stop this access, let's stop communicating with our community. I don't, I just don't get it.
And one more thing, when we're talking about minorities, let's talk about the minorities of the people that we are representing here too. We are seeing more and more people being involved in what's going on in the school district. Let's just look at the Somali families, for, for example, you know, hosting a candidate's forum this year. These are our minorities. These are the kind of people that we are representing too. There's a lot of people getting more and more involved, including our students, you know, those young adults that don't go and vote and don't participate because they're not informed sometimes. So they are, they also say, I would like to be able to watch it, even if they don't, a lot of them still understand English, they can do it.
I don't think they're, they're actually waiting to see a study session on television when you have other electronic games and other things, homework and everything else to do, so that's a, that's a stretch.
There are people that like to be informed too. There are people, even minorities, like to know what's going on, a lot of people do.
Now that I have my notes in front of me, I wanted to clarify what I was saying earlier. Like, if we look at the MSBA model policy, they talk about there's meetings, special meetings, and emergency meetings. It says, paraphrasing, a meeting is a gathering, at least a quorum or more of board members of the school board, or quorum of a committee or subcommittee where they can receive information as a group on issues relating to official business of the school board. So it wouldn't necessarily, so by this definition, it would be if we decided, if there's a quorum of us, or if the youth advisory council quorum went to the Jefferson Student Government Meeting, that would then be a meeting that we'd have to post. So that's what I was referring to. I think going to what Director Stagoff was saying, I'm not surprised that my friends and the people that voted for me came up and told me that I did a good job for turning off the cameras. Because I just have a feeling that, you know, your supporters are gonna tell you that they liked what you did, or they're more likely to tell you that, interview with you. Because, yeah, I didn't get anybody saying that, other than the emails that were sent to the entire board, I didn't get individual messages from people telling me that we should keep them on, but I got the people coming up to me telling me, oh, yeah, you were right, turn them off. And then, what I would mention is, as I was trying, alluding to before, if we see something that's on an agenda, that you say, you know, that really should be at a regular board meeting, not a study session, we should inform whoever the board chair is at the time, superintendent, I don't believe that this should be on a study session. This should, this is something that needs to be discussed at the regular board meeting. And in fact, I can tell you from being at those meetings, the Wednesday meetings for the past year, oftentimes, the reasons why the study session gets canceled is because we're actually just moving the agenda item from the study session to the board meeting. They say, well, this is something quick, it, it's just, you know, whatever, it's an update, it's this or that. And so a lot of times, I've noticed we've canceled, I think, more of the study sessions than we've had. I could be wrong, if we go back and look on the record, maybe, you know, I'm off on that. But sort of where I'm going at is, maybe more of the study session material should just be at the regular board meeting, and in this question becomes moot because we're using the study sessions more of actual study sessions, like meeting with youth groups, going to transportation, and they, they could be things that aren't necessarily regular scheduled study sessions as often.
There were two.
I think, yeah, I mean, we just put them on there just as a placeholder, just so that way we don't accidentally forget to, to post it, and then we can't do it.
There were two school districts that say they don't even have study sessions, they just do it all at a meeting, so. But anyway, there's a motion on the floor. Would you repeat it, just so?
Yeah, the motion was to continue with what we're doing for, let's just say, at least in another 11 months, come back to the conversation.
A year, because then it'll be November.
A year, yes, okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, we don't want to make it in October.
So if, is there any further discussion, or shall we vote? No further discussion. All in favor of the motion to postpone the discussion? All right, continue the discussion? No, no, all right, say it again.
Continue with the cameras on, in study sessions only, off for a period of a year. Come back to that conversation.
Thank you. All in favor, please signify by saying aye, and I believe we should have a roll call vote. We'll start with Director Stagoff.
No.
Aye.
No.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. That brings us to our board member reports. Director Berks.
Go, go ahead, Jim, you can go first.
Thanks, because I'll probably cover some things that you are gonna say.
Yes, you probably will.
I'll get the first word in there anyhow. I have a very interesting past couple of weeks, and they have to do with community engagement. I spent some time over at Bridging, going through the whole facility and seeing everything, taking a little mini tour as a volunteer's assistant and seeing all of the work that they do. And Fran Heisman, bless his heart, was there again, smiling and greeting people as they came in. But for a family engagement thing, I think that would be a great opportunity for us to go over to Bridging and maybe work there for a half a day, or do something volunteering. Or I was even thinking with our youth advisory committee, last year we met at Veep. And this year, maybe we could meet with all the kids over there in their conference room at Bridging, so they could see the facility. They have everything there that's needed to, to, to fill a room for a family, a vacant room, they have everything there, including utensils, pots and pans, and dishes, and so forth like that. And so I just, that's just a great opportunity for, for community engagement for the board, if you want to put that down as an activity. A second one was Oasis for Youth, which is, how was that Oak Grove Presbyterian Church? I spent some time over there, and we even had a speaker come to our, our Optimus Club and present what they do as a drop, drop-in center from two to five during the week. And then they have some case, some actual students from between 16 to 24, either helping them get, get back in school or trying to provide jobs. And there's so many agencies around that do that, but Oasis for Youth, right local here, that we could go over and work with them for a while. The Kennedy Music Program is going full speed, so I was over there spending some time with their music, and I even threatened to sing with him on one particular song that I knew, but, but if I was to do that, I know Director Oliva would get upset because I'm infringing in his, his area. But just that they have so many tremendous programs over there at Kennedy for their music students, that normally a student wouldn't be active in anything. When we talked before about what do you want to do to be engaged, well, they have opportunities for music over there that's second to none. And other than going to some of the other schools and visiting them, disrupting their classes, it's so much fun to do when the little kids see you and, and all of a sudden ask all kinds of questions because you're a visitor there, and they want to know what you're doing here. Tomorrow is Veterans Breakfast over at the City Hall. I'll be going over to there and to that. And then, of course, Wednesday is our flag raising ceremonies at the various schools. That concludes my report. It's probably just as well, since I can't talk with...
Madam Chair. We had the youth advisory council meeting just before tonight's meeting, and I won't go into too much depth because Chair of that committee, Director Oliva, is, is on that. I'm sure he's gonna share his notes. Last week, Intermediate 917 had a half-day work session. And among other things, we're looking into moving to a self-funded insurance model. They currently have self-funded dental, and then they're, they're looking at options for self-funding the rest of it. Was really, really happy, and so much so, I didn't sleep so much the night before, to go to the Future Leaders Conference. It was over at Bloomington Hilton, the one off of France and 82nd. Anyways, this was their fall business conference. This is hosted by the Chamber of Commerce. There, there are a bunch of different tables, there were 20 tables, I think, and these are students, they're seniors, primarily seniors from Kennedy and Jefferson. There were some couple of juniors and one or two sophomores that would come over. What you're doing is, there's two adults at each table, and the adults are, are sharing perspective on things from first impressions, career opportunities, self-confidence, keeping networking alive, what is networking, perhaps how to dress for a, for an interview, perhaps what to say, what not to say, don't ask how much money the, the job is the very first time you sit down, those types of things. And it's hosted by Stevie Ray. And I, I think everyone's, at least locally, has heard the comedian Stevie Ray. So he does a lot of motivational speaking, and it's, he, it's very, very interactive. So there's, there's nowhere to hide, there's no, you can't duck under the tables. Everybody gets tapped on the shoulder at one point during that half-day. And you can see some of the kids come in and they look around and go, wow, I just, I get to have a half-day off of school. And they don't know, some of them, most of them know what to expect, some of them don't. And they think, well, I'm just gonna sit here and, and they'll give me a meal and I can go home. And at the end, they're just, they're energized, they're jazzed, they're having a lot of fun. So that's a really interesting day. They do one in the fall, and I think they do one in the spring. Attended Lights On After School over at Washburn Elementary, Tom was there. That was a lot of fun. The Kids Safari Program sponsors that one. There was food and games and yogurt from...
Culver's.
Culver's yogurt, yeah, and you could get...
Custard.
Custard, sorry, frozen custard. You could get, I watched as Tom's son mixed it into a chocolate malt and was just showing me the ins and outs of how to eat that. Also, I'd like to say thank you to, to my coworkers for the conversation that we just had. We had a, a civil conversation about a topic that everyone seems to be rather energized about, and, and I'm not seeing any darts or arrows being slung in my direction. I appreciate the, I appreciate the conversation. I have to say, it wasn't always this way, and, and I, I'm, I'm appreciative of the way that we're working together. And I, and I, I just wanted to say thanks. That wasn't in my report, I snuck it in there. Also wanted to, just to say thanks to all the voters who cast their ballots last week and, and voted to keep our team together for at least another two years. So, thanks for those that are listening, and, and our one audience member out there.
She's not listening.
She's not listening.
That's, that's the end of my report.
Anyone else?
Done. Did you have homework? You can go.
Ladies first, scientist.
All right, well, I was also going to say congratulations to the three colleagues that were re-elected, and look forward to another two years together, at least. And really briefly, I attended the parade at Hillcrest last week, and then all of the room parties afterwards. I think I made it around and stuck my nose in every room, I think. I think I got everybody. But, you know, the parents really turned out there for the parade and for the room parties. It was amazing how many parents were either with, with students in their parade or lining the hallways to see the parade. So it was quite interesting. It was a very, very nice turnout by the, by the parents there at school. And I also had, this evening, before the board meeting and before the youth advisory, I attended the teacher negotiations again today. So that concludes my report.
Director Oliva?
Before I forget to mention, I was thinking a topic that the Community Engagement Committee may want to consider, is I noticed at, like, at the beginning of this meeting where we talked about American Education Week and Chemical Health Week, and I saw our board with all of our friends on there, I, I was wondering if we make our business friends aware of that. I believe at one of the conferences, I want to say it was Centennial School District, that's one of the ways that they really get the community involved, is we are centennial, and all the businesses have stickers, and they all participate in the thing. So that might be something to, to take a look at. Now, in my report, I attended the PTSA council meeting. We had presentations on technology in the classrooms, the great things that are happening with that. We also talked about safety and the weather plan. One of the parents brought up concern, she had mentioned with kids walking in the winter, especially when we start getting borderline, maybe we're gonna close at 25 below zero, and now it's 18 below zero, and there's kids walking. And she had said, you know, she'll be driving, and she'll see kids as she knows, and she'll stop and pick them up and take them to whatever quarter mile it is down the road, and was wondering if the district could send shuttles for the kids that would normally be walking. And we don't, we don't do that. That was a top, an idea that was brought up. It also said, you also have to be careful telling your kids to get into a van that says they're from the school district here to pick you up. So that would be an issue. Oh, another thing that the parents had brought up is, we don't have an easily identifiable, I have a question button on the website. So if they just had a general catch-all email address, because they can find departments and send any emails, but they said it was difficult if you didn't know who you're supposed to send it to, to have an email to send, and, and a message to.
Like a red help button?
Yeah, like a easy button, basically, yeah. It was just a questions, that would be a catch-all that someone would answer and, and forward the information. I said they could direct all of them directly to Les Fritjaki, and he would, he would, he would send it to the right person.
Director Stagoff, you do have an email on this conversation where we probably answer 20 emails a day that we direct to departments and others who can't find the answer.
Okay. Did you hear them, they were talking about, they're like, I don't know where it is, I haven't seen it. So maybe it needs to be on the individual school sites too.
Good suggestion, I'll look into that.
Because it's probably on the district site, if you go to the district landing page. But maybe like if I'm on my schools page, because that's what I have bookmarked, I wouldn't know where, where even to go to the district.
Most parents go over to their child's school website.
General district question, I mean, maybe, that might be a, a place to put it. We met with the youth advisory council. So this, we did that today before this meeting, so now we've met with the high school students, we've met with the middle school students, I have... We've met with the middle school students. I have a lot of notes here, uh, that I'll go over and review. Um, what I really appreciated from the conversation today was, without any baiting on my part, at the end, they all said, we wish that we were more involved, more active. I mean, they gave me a list of, like, 50 things that they do. But this, and they explained why it was important, and then they said it, it makes you more connected to your school, you get more friends. Um, you can explore new things, you learn new things. And they had all these other opportunities that they wanted to get involved with, but the big thing is, they said, they want to think that their opinions matter. So, when they're at Student Council, and they say, well, this is what we think, they want to believe that the school actually believes it and goes on, goes along with it. Uh, and it ranged from some of the students saying, no, I think when we say stuff, um, you know, they listen, and they'll usually go with what we recommend. And we had some that said, no, basically, yeah, we'll tell them, but the teachers just decide. And so, um, that, I thought that was a great conversation, and I think, um, we're getting the students, uh, thinking, how can they have a bigger impact, uh, on their own life and their own direction? And I think all the things we're doing with personal growth plans and all that stuff for the students, and I think the board getting involved with the students on that level, where they can help us with our decisions, I think this could open up new possibilities. I don't know what they are yet, but we'll get there. So, um, yeah, I was really excited with, um, what we're doing with the Youth Advisory Council. Uh, and I think that's it for me.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, I, um, attended, uh, the Friday before Election Day, so that was October 30th, I believe. I attended the AMSD Legislative Committee, and, um, just so you know, that we are in the process of building our platform right now, so I will be bringing more information as we have it more in detail. And then our, um, School Board Legislative Committee will be meeting sometime really soon. We're still, you know, working on dates, and then we will eventually let Deb Monkold know what would be our date. And the only last thing I can say is, uh, you know, I'd like to thank our, um, Bloomington residents, voters for allowing me to stay at the board for another four years. I feel honored, and I really appreciate that. So, I'm looking forward to continue our work together.
Thank you. Well, I, too, would like to say thank you to the Bloomington voters. I'm looking forward to another four years. I also, I had the opportunity to attend a breakfast at Jefferson the other day regarding, it honored their AP scholars, National Merit Scholars, um, and I guess it's been going on for quite a few years. I was never aware of it, but the students were asked to bring their parents, and they were also given the opportunity to bring their favorite teacher. And there were some fourth-grade teachers there, and there were some kindergarten teachers there, and there were also some high school teachers there. So, I, I I thought that was really a neat, um, thing for Jefferson to, for the kids, the opportunity to get up and say thank you to someone that made a real difference in their life. And a couple of them said they were going to be teachers because of the person that they wrote with them. So, it was very interesting. And I also attended a Bloomington United for Youth meeting, and that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. I have two things. First, as administration had tentatively planned a technology progress report to be given this month. As administration began planning this report, administration decided to include students to help with the presentation. Consideration of the students' busy schedule, we're requesting that, the, a motion by the board to establish an early starting study session in November to accommodate the students' time. So, we'd like a motion to establish a study session for December 14th to start at 6:00 PM. And this would proceed on already scheduled board meeting. So, that'll be December 14th at 6:00 PM to, for technology progress report. May I have a motion, please?
Thank you. Someone like to make the motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor of a study session at 6:15 PM, uh, 6:00 PM on December 14th? I'll please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The board voted no.
Okay. Aye, okay. Anyone to post? None. All right, thank you.
And the last thing is that Wednesday, November 11th is Veterans Day. You know, on our Veterans Day, we'll be having flag raising ceremonies at each of our schools. The ceremonies we conducted by three teams from the Bloomington-based Minnesota Army National Guard. Soldiers on those, on those teams will be from the 334th Brigade Engineers Battalion. And on behalf of the school board and school community, a sincere thank you to all the veterans who have served our country and, and to those men and women who are currently serving. We're most appreciative for the service to our country. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other business to come before the board this evening?
I do have one other thing, and I had mentioned it earlier, and I guess we never discussed it. We do have an invitation for Kennedy High School and Jefferson High School to visit, uh, or attend Student Council meetings. How do we want to do that? Should it be, who is our Youth Advisory Council official members? It would be me and Dick. I mean, we could, we could organize ourselves, or was there something that the whole board would want to attend Student Government Meeting?
If I, if I recall, uh, Jefferson is their, uh, Thursday.
It says Thursday, uh, it says Kennedy is Thursday after school, 2:45 on non-block weeks, and 2:20 on block weeks, which I don't know what that means. And Jefferson Student Council meets from 7:10 to 7:40 every Thursday, except during finals.
Yeah, so Jefferson is morning, Kennedy's after school.
Kennedy's after school. So, you could potentially do them both in the same day.
Well, if you get the dates and put them out there, I think.
Then whoever wants to attend would attend, and then we'll just let, uh, Ms. Monkold know, and you can post it. Okay.
Director.
A little bit of an additional, I have attended both of those, and it, and, um, it's, it's good when we go there and explain to them, hi, I'm a school board member. This is what we do, in a, in a more descriptive nature of, you know, what do you want to do? But just telling them what we do and how they might, in fact, I think it was last year, then I, I approached, do, do any of you want to be on the school board? You know, in a, as a advisory person on the school board? And there were a couple of them that said yes, but a couple of them said no. So, it was just, you know, feeling out how they act about, you know, whether they want to have an advisory committee meeting with the whole group, or whether or not they want to have a representative on the, um, on the school board from each of the high schools. So, those are some of the things that they're interested in talking about, too, is, you know, how they might develop their leadership skills and also be, you know, in tune with what we do on the board.
All right. Anything else? You'll just get us those dates, and we'll.
Sure.
Okay.
Um, all in favor of a German? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're German.